Something.
Okay, I will start. Good evening, everyone. I will start tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen of Tuesday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel. Town of Lunenburg, in response to the COVID nineteen pandemic, is currently following the guidance from the Lunenburg Board of Health, Massachusetts Department of Public Health, and the CDC regarding the virus, and the steps communities can take to prevent its spread, and therefore all town facilities remain closed to the public. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law chapter thirty A, section twenty, all public meetings are being conducted remotely, and this Zoom meeting is broadcast live through the local access channel on Facebook Live and on the public access Facebook page. To join this as a participant or as a viewer, you can start your Zoom application on either your computer, laptop, tablet, or smartphone, and download the Zoom app, and the webinar ID is nine zero nine one seven four zero three four seven. To those people who have no access to computer or any other of those devices, or just chooses to participate by phone, the number is eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine, and once again, the webinar ID is nine zero nine one seven four zero three four seven. Okay. As is customary with these remote meetings, I will ask everybody for their presence here. So I am Tom Alonso, the chair. I am present. Uh, Mr. McQuaid, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Ms. Adams, are you present?
Yes.
Mrs. Locke, are you present?
Yes.
And Madam Town Manager, are you present?
Yes.
There are other people here that will be involved in some of our discussions. I'll introduce them and unmute them as we need to. And I guess we are ready to begin. Now, I see that the pledge was added to this. I have no idea what a Zoom pledge is supposed to look like or where we're supposed to look. So I thought we were going to discuss this and vote on it, but so I don't know how we're supposed to do this. Does anybody have any guidance of how you're supposed to do the Pledge of Allegiance from a Zoom meeting? If I stand up, everybody's going to see belt buckles.
At my daughter's at my daughter's school, they just put up, or her morning meeting, they they have an image of a flag and they it's recorded and they just say it. So I'm not sure. I thought we were going to discuss it so we could have a procedure too.
Okay, let's let's put it on a discussion point. Let's not do it right now, not in any disrespect, only because we don't have the formality down. We have a flag there if people want to say, thank you, Mr. Murphy. But I think we're going to put it on the agenda item to discuss its presence here, so. But thank you. I will open up any public comment from the board this evening. Again, for people who are on here who don't know our meetings, there's a raise your hand flag, as Katie has already put up here. If you can find it on your app, if you want to speak, please put your hand up, and I will call on you so we don't have the Zoom rush of voices at the same time. So, Ms. Ms. Adams.
Okay, I just wanted to say Happy Memorial Day and share a memory from Lunenburg. When I was a child, all the schools were close to the center of town, and what we would do is every classroom you'd take down the flag and a boy scout or a girl scout would lead the line, and every single student in the entire district would meet at the flagpole at the TC Passio School. And then at the time, it was Mary Beth Ford. She was the music teacher. There was a large chorus, and they would sing a lot of songs, and then one song was sung sung by all the students. But it was really, to me, for Memorial Day and for Lunenburg, it was a great memory because every single student in the entire town gathered together. And so that's my memory, and so Happy Memorial to everybody, whatever that looks like, and take care.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the board this evening? Any public comment from the public this evening?
I did.
Mrs. Locke, are you? Oh, okay. Mr. Locke.
Okay, let's switch it over. Carlock fifty Sunset Lane. Pay no attention to the name under my face. Yes, I I would like to make a comment. Okay. I I'm hopeful that postponing town meeting will discuss tonight and give us given serious consideration by the BOS. Besides being the right thing to do for our citizens, it would also allow for implementation of a one twelfth budget and buy us some time until we better understand the revenue impacts of COVID nineteen on the state and the town. The current proposed COVID budget, as it's called, is not conservative. Revenue is unrealistically aggressive, and based on recent inputs from our state government leaders, is likely overstated by over two million dollars, more than eating up the forecast one million dollar surplus. Does anyone really believe that state and local revenues will remain flat from last year, as is the basis of the proposed budget? As this as this information from our state legislatures is only a day or two old, I'm hopeful that our town manager has already taken this into consideration and will acknowledge the seriousness of this situation tonight, supporting delay of town meeting and recommending a one twelfth budget strategy. It's clear that the current planned spending cannot be supported by revenue based on recent state rep inputs and history. If we go into two twenty two thousand twenty one with the current spending plan, we may be forced to make draconian cuts in the second half of the year to recover financially. But as presented, cannot be passed as is. It will require extensive cuts on town meeting floor, and this will not, and this is not the right place to do significant modifications to the town budget. Budget aside, a town meeting in June would not be open to all, even if it's possible to meet the state guidelines for gathering. Our aid and other vulnerable residents should still be encouraged to stay home. A town meeting that excludes these groups does not reflect an open government, and borders on being discriminatory. Further, for the town meeting planning to proceed, many actions and resulting costs would have to be incurred now to prepare for an unlikely town meeting. One big potential advantage to postponing town meeting tonight would be in saving the cost of printing and distributing the town warrant, which will likely have to be changed when better information is known. Please be realistic and make the call on postponing town meeting tonight, or as soon as possible, so we can stop trying to force the square peg into a round hole. Let's decide. Let's decide to implement a one twelfth budget strategy and focus our limited resources on the real issues like public health, safety, and preparing for the tough financial year we all have ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any other public comment from the public? Okay. Seeing none. Announcements, two announcements. First of all, in light of what or in concurrence with what Ms. Adams just said about Memorial Day, there is a Memorial Day program, although it is not in person, it has been recorded, and it will be broadcast on Public Access Cable, the Lunenburg Public Access Cable Channel on Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty fifth at ten AM. That will be its premiere showing, and then it will be shown on PAC TV at various times during the week following weeks. So if you miss it, then you will be able to catch it some other time, or you can, of course, record it. And that is, again, Monday, May twenty fifth, the actual Memorial Day at ten AM on PAC TV. Second announcement is from the people running the Lunenburg Farmers Market. So Shanina Burns is is a acting co-manager of the Lunenburg Farmers Market along with Michael Fontaine. They have sent correspondence to myself and to the town manager that they are doing everything in their power to, they continue to hold the farmers market even during these times. Like many others, they look forward to the market season, and open air market brings the finest and best products to the town. Customers have the opportunity to shop for the freshest produce, the most delicate choices meats, and the smoothest dairy products and the richest farm eggs. As much as we need grocery stores, we also need farms, and farms need us. And then Lunenburg, and with Lunenburg being a right to farm community, only makes sense to continue this service to the community. As a manager, I treat this volunteer position as a paid full-time job, and I've worked tirelessly since March twenty third, trying to attend every meeting and every call with the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, MDR, which has worked very closely with the governor's office and with our local Board of Health, just so that I can keep the farmers market tradition going. By doing so, I've been able to devise protocols and procedures that align with the governor's recommendations. I have submitted detailed maps and rules and regulations that conform to those recommendations. While most of our vendors are returning this year, we have lost a few, but have had a new a few new faces joining us. And I've received an overwhelming amount of support from many residents of this town and could not have constructed such a sound plan without the help of Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Stober, Mr. Burns, Ms. Malarri, and Ms. Clav. Without their assistance, I do not know where we would be at this point in time. Many vendors have also stepped up to offer their assistance in whatever way they can. While May thirty first, two thousand and twenty, may not feel the same as June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen did, the market will be just as important, if not more important than last year. I invite you all to join us on opening day to see how hard Michael and I have worked to make this year's farmers market happen. And I will, I've already instructed her to post these conditions, and Madam Town Manager, if we can post them somewhere that makes sense on the website, so people can know what the guidelines are in attending it, obviously, it will be very different, and the rules will be very stringent. So compliance with them is imperative, and obviously, it's in everybody's interest best interest that they do comply, A, for everybody's safety, and B, so that the farmers market can go on. And I want to thank Shanina Burns and Michael Fontaine for doing that. I know it's been a lot of work for them to get it rolling, even in a good year, and in a year such as this, it's got to be an overwhelming task. Okay, so those are the announcements. We have no interviews, appointments, reappointments, or resignations. Is that correct, Madam Town Manager?
That is correct.
Okay. So let's do some old business. So we have this skateboard park toll booth request for a change of date. Obviously, I needn't ask why they need to change the date. So let's go to that request. I should also take this opportunity to say that if it is not already evident, Mr. Jeffries is not able to join us tonight. All right, so the change in dates is in our drive, Google Drive.
September twenty sixth.
Yep, I'm just looking for it. Excuse me while, there it is. Okay. So yes, they are looking to move it out to September twenty sixth from, I don't know when it was, but we had approved it already. So.
Okay, I would make a motion that we move the skateboard park toll booth request from the date they previously had to September twenty six, two thousand and twenty.
I have a second.
Second.
Obviously, all the same rules apply, just the date has changed. The locations will change, the people who can do it still need the same waivers, et cetera. So if we can just let them know after assuming a positive vote, that all those rules still apply, but just the date has changed. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Adams?
Aye.
Mr. McQuaid?
Aye.
Mrs. Locke?
Aye.
An aye from me. Okay. FY two thousand and twenty one budget. Does anybody have any questions about that? Phyllis, you had asked a question about the town manager's hiring freeze. This would be the time to potentially the this or the town town manager report, either of those two places to take that up if you want.
Great. I remember that town manager mentioning that there was a hiring freeze due to due to the pand- pandemic, so I'm really surprised that they're thinking about going ahead with the assessor's position.
Madam Town Manager.
Yes. So that position, it would be a reallocation of existing funds and would not commence until minimum of July first. And also, I would consider that an essential service.
And also, it's not, it's not, I mean, it's not additional revenue. It's just either we have to go with an outsourced service, or we have to go with inside principal assessor, correct? I mean, we don't, we don't have the choice of not going with any, any of those two.
Right.
No, but we currently have a service that we're happy with, and that does a good job. And every time they make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen, they are well informed. They are lovely, they are informative. We don't have any issues with their service, and since they have a variety of assessors, they're the whole package. If we hire an assessor, there are going to be things that that assessor can't do, so we're going to have to be contracting assessor's work out. And I, you know, when you hire, you do have OPEB responsibilities, and, you know, that's a discussion for a further date. There's no reason in my mind that that shouldn't be part of the cost of a new hire, because it does cost the town more to hire higher than it does to outsource. So I I really think this is the wrong time to make that kind of decision, especially since we have a contractor that we're very happy with already.
Well, I guess when you say, when you say we're very happy with, I guess you're leaving out the fact that the Board of Assessors and another elected body have decided to go out and ask for a bid, so maybe they are not so happy as you are happy.
Well, you know, when I asked the town manager if their work was satisfactory, she said, yes, that there wasn't anything wrong with their work, and that we were going to continue with them until such time as a a person hired. It just feels like the wrong time to be hiring someone, and that this position should be put off till next year.
And I would suggest, I would suggest you take that up with the Board of Assessors, whose office that falls under the purview of.
I'd like to take it up with the town manager, who should be having a hiring freeze in place. She's the leader of the town government, and she works for us.
The hiring freeze was didn't include non-essential, so it was for non-essential expenditures and hiring. This is an essential service that we can't go with.
When do we ever hire non-essential people? I mean, yikes, as a town, we should never be hiring non-essential people. This isn't a frivolous organization. We should only be hiring essential people.
There's a difference between hiring a a clerk or a page at the library versus a principal assessor position.
I I I don't, I just don't think we should be doing it.
Okay.
Um, so on to the budget. We just got a sheet that's dated today. What are the changes in the budget?
There is only one change, and that is the, so the prior year's bill for the four hundred and seventy six dollars and twenty one cents, that it has to be paid out of free cash. So that increases the amount used for free cash of free cash by four hundred and seventy six dollars and twenty one cents. So therefore, increasing our surplus to a million fifty six thousand four hundred and twenty five dollars.
So it's a four hundred and seventy six dollar change?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and when are you going to address the email that we received from Senator Tran?
I already did address it. I don't, there was no guidance from the state leadership in that email. It was an opinion he provided, wasn't the opinion of the leadership. And I can read the email from Representative Hay that everyone on the board received as well. It's a completely different.
I'd like you to read the email, the latest email from Senator Tran. I think that's more impactful. The five fifteen.
If you don't have that in front of me, I have the Representative Hayes email.
I have it in front of me. I'd be happy to read it. "It was brought to my attention to watch your finance committee meeting on five fourteen twenty. Heard Heather's comments, and I would like to provide you with some context to my recommendation, as stated in the email below to Heather and Peter. In the Senate, we are working hard to try to come to some numbers and guidelines that we can convey to municipalities. The Senate and House have been in consultation with well-known firms such as Mass Budget, ala Clayton Matthews, Mass Taxpayers, and the Center for State Policy Analysis to come to a realization of the numbers. They are still to be determined. We have also to look at historical data, such as the recession of two thousand nine, two thousand ten. In that two-year recession, local aid was reduced by twenty eight point eight percent. Special education and regional school transportation were reduced by forty two point one percent and thirty point five percent respectively. Due to the pandemic, today's economy is even worse. Your budget's under your purview. I'm just being transparent and providing you with what I know as a member of the Ways and Means Committee. Regard and stay safe, Dean."
Mr. Chair.
I think that's pretty impact, I think that's pretty impactful information. And if our state aid is reduced by twenty eight, twenty five percent, that's two point three million dollars, which is twice as much as your supposed surplus. You're you're ignoring the elephant in the room in your budget.
I don't believe I am. Mr. Chair, can I read the email from Representative Hay?
Please.
Okay. Heather, I am writing in response to calls from you and Finance Committee Member Peter Beardmore, asking for guidance regarding proposed cuts to local aid in the upcoming state budget. Both Speaker DeLeo and Chairman Mikulowicz continue to say that revenue projections are too fluid to speculate at this time as to possible reductions in local aid. The speaker did say that many members were contacting him to advocate on behalf of local aid and education. When informed that people were speculating about the amount or percentages of possible reductions, Chairman Mikulowicz stated he believes that wrong information is dangerous, while he understands the concerns of those responsible for city and town budgets. They both stated a one twelfth budget for the state was one of the possible options for the first few months of the fiscal year. And this is according to Section Five of an Act to address challenges faced by municipalities and state authorities from COVID nineteen, which was passed by legislature late in March, allows cities and states to implement a one twelfth budget.
And what was the date of that email?
May thirteenth. And it was forwarded.
That was two days before the email from Senator Tran.
No, he, Senator Tran sent an email prior to that second email, so.
No, his, his email was dated the fifteenth. Senator Tran's email is dated the fifteenth.
Correct, but he sent one prior to that.
Yep. But the one I read was dated the fifteenth.
Right. Again, I'd say there's, what was asked for was guidance from the state leadership, and there is no guidance from state leadership right now.
But there's a lot of historical perspective that we could, should be using.
Speculation.
Historical perspective. It's not speculation.
We haven't gone through something like this before.
No, it's worse than anything we've gone through.
Mrs. Adams, Ms. Adams, I'm sorry.
Sure, you know, I I think it's it's very very hard to see what's going to be up and coming, but I I I do not think expecting difficult things is speculation. I think it's very practical. Um, and right now, I feel very much that we're in a bubble, because in our minds, we look forward to everything going back, but we don't know what going back is going to look like. We don't know what businesses are impacted. Um, you know, I'm starting to realize that a lot of operations are, have moved to cash-based operations, haircuts, things like that, where tax money isn't being generated. And so I don't think it's a speculation to think that there's problems ahead. I think hopeful would be a baseline, and and that's so probably not practical. So I I think it's okay. I don't think it should be a negative thing to discuss the fact that calling it a speculation where this is likely the biggest economic problem most people have faced. I think it's realistic to realize that the difficult conversations will come, and and they should be welcomed now, even if it's just in a planning way. I think it's okay to consider that if everything went back to normal, that would be wonderful, but the likelihood of that is so unknown but expected. And, you know, reading those emails, you can look back to times where things have happened in the past, and knowing that the schools might not get the aid we're used to and things like that, and we already struggle to meet um, the school's budget, I think it's very practical to realize that there's going to be difficult things ahead.
Okay, but I don't, so what kind of guidance? I don't understand. I don't understand.
The only reason I was objecting is because I felt like the conversation was becoming very tense, but I think that it's, it shouldn't be a tense thing, that these things should be talked about very calm and and using words like speculating problems. I don't think it's 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 fair to select men luck, because she's just worried, and a lot of people are worried. And I think I I'm not injecting opinion. I'm just saying, let's have these conversations and 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 not bring any hostility to it. It's it's just reality at this point.
Oh, okay. I don't, I don't think the word speculation was hostility. I think speculation is exactly what both of the representative and the senator both said. I mean, it, there's only two things it can be. It's either they know it or they're guessing at it. And guessing would be speculation. It's not a negative word. It's an honest word. And I'm not saying which side anybody should come down upon, but I mean, nobody has any facts, and that's that's, I guess, what we need to base things on.
We do have, we do have the fact that it's the worst economic crisis since the Great Depression. We know that it's worse than two thousand thousand eight, two thousand nine. We know that. It's not speculation. It's a fact.
I don't even know that you know that.
It's, yeah, it's not the same, it's not the same at all. Those were.
No, it's worse.
No, it's it's this, we did this to ourselves. We chose to do this. Those other things are actually economic flaws in the system that were thrust upon us. We don't know how quickly we'll restart a lot of this. We don't know that it's as long-lasting as an actual financial crisis that those were.
I I think it is an actual financial crisis.
Okay, I, we understand your position. I I'm not frustrated that you have that position. I'm frustrated that you're frustrated that we don't share that position. I guess that's what I'm saying. Because I don't know that, first of all, let's make it clear that if we, let's just assume we tell the town manager that, you know what? We're going to assume a twenty five percent budget. So I have two points that I would make. First of all, if it's twenty five percent, then is it possible it'll be twenty nine percent? Is it possible that it's thirty eight percent? Is it possible that's fifteen? So they're all guesses. If you want to reduce twenty five percent of state aid, you're looking at the loss of firing twenty to thirty people in this town on a guess that we think they're not going to fund it to that level. I'm not willing to say we're going to fire twenty five people in town personally, with just somebody thinking that this may come to that. That's what, I guess, what I'm coming down to.
I I would agree with that, too. I mean, I don't want to start talking about cutting to the point where we're cutting people's jobs on speculation. When when we know that we need to cut them, we should cut them, but I don't want to cut them and they all, we did have to, sorry.
The solution is go to a one twelfth budget.
That doesn't do anything. That just puts it, that puts the budget flat at last year.
You can reduce the budget and go to one twel-
Well, that's not a one twelfth budget.
Can't be less than this current fiscal year.
All right, then, then just go with it for month by month and see how it goes.
We, we could pass the budget and do the same thing. We'll still have three months. We, we could pass the budget and do the same thing. We'll still have three months to know what's gonna happen.
Once you pass.
Before even school starts.
If school starts, but you know, going, I think it's safer to do a one-twelfth budget.
Okay, I, I understand. That's your position. I understand your position. Mrs., Ms. Adams.
Um, yeah, no, the conversation moved past, but in terms of like speculation and, and things with, with, you can find specific things. I think the state asked for one point two billion to borrow from the feds to cover unemployment for another month. When you look at facts like that, the kind of money that has been allocated towards this and, and if the state already doesn't have money to meet its own things, I, I just don't think, I, I don't think we're gonna have have anything coming that we expect because it can't come if it's not there. So I, I agree that I wouldn't want to make it, make cuts proactively, but I really feel like it's gotta be something that is, is talked about calm and it doesn't become negative because it is gonna be really difficult and very sad moving forward.
Putting blinders on.
Billion for one item. That's like, you know, everybody's gonna, it's not gonna be pretty when everything is, is like going back to normal. There'll be very different funds.
Anybody else on this subject? Okay, current business, the Saliba property. Vote to declare the purchase of nine ninety-four Northfield Road a unique acquisition and vote to execute the purchase of the property and designate member of board, uh, member of the board to sign the documents. Again, these documents are in our Google Drive. Do we need a specific person, Madam Town Manager, to read the vote? Is that by the clerk or does anybody have to move that?
Anyone can move that.
I can read it anyway.
All right, there you go.
Uh, so I move to declare the purchase of the Saliba property a unique acquisition. Said property described in deed recorded at Worcester North Registry of Deeds books, uh, forty-six thirty, page two twenty-four with two fifty-nine point three-one acres plus minus at nine ninety-four Northfield Road. Rear Lunenburg assessment parcel ID zero three seven zero zero one five zero zero. Pittsburgh assessment parcel ID S thirty-one dash twelve dash A and D being the greater part of Lot One on plan record at Plan Book Three eighty-two, Plan, uh, Plan including parcel A.
I don't know. What, what's that painting? Page? Book Three Two Page?
I think it's Plan One.
Plan One, yeah. Plan One including parcel A on page, on Plan Record at Plan Book Five fourteen. Uh, Plan fourteen and fifty-eight point seven-five acres plus or minus at nine sixty-one Northfield Road. South, uh, Lunenburg assessment parcel ID zero three seven dash zero 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 nine dash zero zero being Lot Three. Um, Plan Record at Plan Book Five twelve, uh, Plan Eight, including parcel B on said plan. Board determines that advertising by soliciting proposals for the acquisition of real property will not benefit its interests as regards the acquisition of the property because of the unique qualities and location of property, including that this property meets five of the six defining criteria set forth in the town's open space and recreation plan and is contiguous to other open space parcels. Bodies that have beneficial interest in the property are current owners, John Saliva and David Saliva. Property will be purchased for seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars with five hundred thousand dollars coming from state park and land grant funds and the remaining two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from the town of Lunenburg as is previously authorized.
Hundred seventy-five.
Two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. The town of Lunenburg, as is previously authorized, November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, special town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to add in to thank all the people that worked towards this. Um, I think it's wonderful. All the different pieces of land Lunenburg has now, more than ever, people have been enjoying things like this. So I'm happy we have it.
Agreed.
And especially Brandon Kibbe, who really pulled it all together.
Yep. Okay, uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion in the second, please indicate by saying hi. Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mister McQuade.
Hi.
Mrs. Luck.
Hi.
And an eye for me. Damon, you're doing such a great job. Let's go on to the second motion.
I wouldn't go that far.
This one has no dashes and no lot, no deed numbers, so we're a lot safer.
I move to proceed with the execution of the purchase of the Saliba property in nine ninety-four Northfield Road as voted at the November twelfth, two thousand nineteen special town meeting and to authorize Chairman Tom Alonso to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the town.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on this? All those in favor, Ms. Adams.
Hi.
Mister McQuade.
Hi.
Mrs. Luck.
Hi.
And an eye for me. So Madam Town Manager, just let me know when those documents are ready and I will zip up the town hall to sign them.
So congratulations to the town. Yeah, the town had to vote to approve this. Good for us.
Well, once it's all finalized, I think we'll have the big celebration, so.
It's a good deal.
So, uh, current business number two, the discussion on plan for the safety precautions for the annual town meeting. For this, I am going to unmute some people. So with us, we have our town moderator, Tim Murphy. Tim, are you there?
I am.
Okay, I'm going to unmute. I have our town council attorney, Adam Costa. Are you there?
I am, Mister Chairman. Thank you.
And we have also our fire chief. I'm gonna unmute you, Fire Chief, uh, Sullivan, though. And I think, and we have our Board of Health Representative, Jim Greffey. So I'm gonna unmute you, Jim, as well. Oh, we have Jim Marino as well, Chief of Police. Great, so we have everybody. Jimmy, you may want to unmute your mic on your end. There we go. Okay, I think that's everybody. So, um, Jim Greffey, are you there?
I am.
Okay. So I will open up the meeting for talking about the safety precautions. I had the town manager send some documents for us that were, um, presented to us from, I guess they were compiled from several boards of health, but mainly from Berkshire County Boards of Health. That's where the memo came from. And that was an extensive, uh, seven-page document talking about different things that we can consider. And then we have both our labor councils' response to safety protocols and, and then our own town councils' response to guidance from that Board of Health guidelines or potential guidelines. So Madam Town Manager or Matt, Mister Moderator, I don't know who wants to lead on this, about where we want to do this, how we want to proceed.
Would you want, um, Jim Greffey to lead this with guidance from Board of Health, really?
Um, if I might, have, I have a question. Before we talk about the things we can do to make town meetings safer, shouldn't we talk about, should we even be considering having a town meeting? I mean, why have it at all in June? I mean, I think that's the first question.
I guess that question would be of any year. Why would, I mean, let's start with that. Why would you have a town meeting?
You know, this, this is, this is a little different year. We have, there, we can delay the town meeting. Town meetings can be delayed for months until safer meeting options are available.
Okay, so.
We have permission to delay the town meeting.
I don't deny the fact that.
If we hold the town meeting in June, right, so. So I, I think we need to discuss why not. You know, if we have it in June, there's a significant piece of the population that won't be able to attend. People with COPDs, people who are over age sixty-five, well, it's discriminatory. We're not encouraging participation. We're discouraging participation. There's no, to me, there is just, if, if we, we, we sort of walked down this road with town caucus. We kept saying, yep, we're gonna have town caucus. Yep, we're gonna have town caucus, caucus. Then the governor said, nope, you can't have the meeting, and so we didn't have town caucus. The same thing could happen to town meeting, but we will have gone through the expense of mailing the warrant to everyone. And when we get around to having town meeting, we'll probably have a different warrant. It's, it just, I, but I think fools are rushing in here. I don't, the Safer at Home State Advisory instructs residents to stay home as a way of limiting the spread of COVID nineteen. So we're working directly against the Safer at Home State Advisory.
I will, Ms., Ms. Adams.
Okay, I just wanted, with everybody he, here, um, I think I want to be able to start off with the opportunity to talk about for having it. And the reason I say that is because I think we've all experienced, whether it's our own appointments or things, you, you kick the can down the road up until a point that you can't, you can't make up. You know, it went from postponing things to cancel. So I think at some point, we look at, um, the fact that there's no guarantee if you wait two weeks or two months or two years that the world is any different then than it is today. So with the circumstances we have today and how people feel one way or another, I think it would be good to have the conversation about how we could potentially move forward with it. And it's a large building and with all the technology we have, if we can get input and understanding, if somebody felt they wanted to attend but didn't want to be in the room, can we issue people the opportunity to sit in a classroom and have somebody managing a Zoom portion? I think that's what we should do is strategize how we can do it and how we can be inclusive so that it's not discriminatory if we come up with solutions for the problems. Um, and I think with all these people here, I'd like to do that because if we say, let's cancel it for another two weeks, let's cancel it for a month, there comes a point where there could be a new problem, and I think we should try to solve this one and, and look for solutions to having it.
Mister McQuade.
Yeah, I would just, if we're not gonna have it in June, I don't see conditions being any different where we're gonna have it in the next twelve months. I mean, it's not.
You don't think schools will open in September?
Schools might, but the, the virus is not gonna be any less present. The people who you're talking about who are most at risk aren't gonna feel any safer out there. It's not going anywhere.
If it's safe enough for schools to open, it will be safer. If schools don't, aren't able to open, then I would agree with you. It, it wouldn't be safe, it wouldn't be, um, safe enough to have town meeting. But if we're, if we're at a place where people are willing to send their children to school, it will be a safer world. Or we won't be sending our children to school.
Or we will have come to terms with the fact that this is just what we live with now. If you can go to the grocery store, if you can go wait in line at Home Depot, it's, we can create an environment that is as safe as any of those conditions for people to show up to town meeting who want to show up to town meeting.
I go to the grocery store once a month.
Ms. Adams.
Okay, again, like, um, we know a lot in terms of who's vulnerable and like Selectman McQuade said, those people will remain vulnerable, not just for this, but for anything. And so I really want to use this time to talk about how we make this work because the conditions will be the same um, as we move forward for people that feel uncomfortable. How do we make them comfortable regardless of when it is? So with all these people on the meeting with us, let's get input on how we can make it work and be inclusive and be safe regardless of when it is. And then I think we're using our time wisely because we can, whenever it is, and we do have it scheduled at this time, we still need to talk about, um, how to make everyone comfortable, and I think we should focus on that.
I, I agree that's the agenda item, but I did also tell Mrs. Luck that this is the time she could bring that up. But I will make this as easy as possible. If anybody wants to speak in favor, aside from Mrs. Luck, of postponing town meeting with all the people here involved, this is the time to do it. And I see no one doing that. So we will go on to the safety precautions then that we can put in place. So Mister Greffey, would you like to lead us through these, these, this guideline and then maybe suggest from your professional perspective, which ones you would like to see employed or you would recommend to the town we employ?
So I think I'll speak more in general terms than on that specific plan. I, I haven't really seen your plan for what your proposal to do in Lunenburg, so I'm not sure. Talking to the Berkshire plan is that apropos, but I, I guess what I would say is there's a bunch of points going forward that I would want the town to consider if you're doing town meeting. You know, one would be the education of the public. Um, you know, notify the public of what you're doing. Uh, notifying that you have a plan to do that, that this is safe. Um, and then also in that notification, provide some expectations that the town has for people who are coming to the meeting uh, to make sure that everybody can maintain it, uh, themselves safely at the meeting. So I think that, that public education would be the first thing. Uh, personnel, personnel safety. Obviously, you have people who are working town meeting or working town elections. I think it's really important not only to, uh, consider, uh, you know, engineering controls, if you will, that you can do to help them feel safe in their respective positions, but also ask them what it is that they think will help make them feel more comfortable doing their job. You may not be able to achieve all of those things, but I think it's important for people who are working for you to have some kind of input on the, the practices you're gonna put in place. Um, third, I think, you know, the, the employees and, and the town, you, you need to kind of judge the, the confidence and comfort level of the public house for doing this meeting. If nobody's comfortable with your plan, your attendance at town meeting may not be all that successful. Um, noticing to the public, so if you pick a time and you come up with a plan, I think it's really important to put that plan out to the public. Again, as a way to manage expectations, we're holding the meeting, here it is, here's the plan for the election, here's the plan for doing it. Here's how we're gonna do social distancing, the lines, the queues, the seating setup. Um, here's what we expect you, town citizens who are attending the meeting, uh, to be able to do to cooperate, to make sure this is as safe as possible. Talk about mask wearing, having masks on site, uh, for those people who don't come with one or don't have one. Um, and, and I think you're kind of following those general guidelines that seem to be repeated over and over again in that Berkshire document. I think any plan that you have, uh, you inform yourself with the social distancing, the hand washing, the hygiene, the disinfecting components, uh, they're important in public health. So again, I, I'm not sure I've seen the plan that you guys have put together, uh, but those were the general points that I would make, uh, about any plan that you have.
So we don't have, the reason why you haven't seen the plan is that this is a discussion about putting together that plan.
Okay.
Ms. Adams.
Sure, I just wanted to ask if, um, I sort of had a list of things that to me in my mind are um, the largest complications. Um, one being like the microphone aspect when everybody gathers to speak. And if people want to throw out and brainstorm the things that we would need to address, like people who aren't wearing masks. Um, and, and certainly, you know, there's, um, a path for that to happen because the law says that you may not need to wear one. Um, how people will gather at the microphones. Um, if everybody's going to wear one, like the town moderator who's speaking the entire time, is it too prohibitive to have one on? I'm not sure. In which case, the people just distance. Um, and so I didn't know if, if somebody wants to gather a list of things and then we address how we would do them. The, um, folks that volunteered to do the check-in, you know, who would be comfortable to do that. We have, um, other people that would step in and do it, things like that.
Mrs. Luck.
I was just saying the microphone must have to be cleaned between. I was just saying the microphone must have to be cleaned between each use, right?
Well, we're going to have to, yeah, I mean, somebody's got to come up with a solution to that. Obviously, that's the critical one.
If people have a mask on theoretically, then the microphone would remain without droplets on it.
Or someone touch it, right?
People touch it.
Well, you got, right, I mean, so.
If you're worried, don't touch it.
We have, we have to come up, that's, uh, to me, that's the, that's the tricky one. The tricky one is the microphones, so. Um, you could, you may be able to put some cloth barrier between the microphone and the speaker. So even if they're wearing a mask, it'll go through another thing of cloth that's a freestanding, you know, shield in front of it. I'm just spitballing here.
And you. And like for the microphone, for example, where it's typically set up in the two aisles, we'll just pick one designated place to set one up where people aren't sitting. So then when people gather and wait there like they do to check out with their groceries, they're not standing above or around people in a way that makes them uncomfortable. So I think we have an isolated designated microphone area. And that, I think, solves that problem.
Um. I, I, I actually think you might be better off having more microphones so that you can spread people out more than having one where people are going to gather. Um, I'd like to see the microphone just set at one height. Let's figure out what the best height is. You know, one of the problems we always have with people touching it is you've got shorter people, taller people and that kind of, so we've got to figure out the height, we've got to leave it at that height and tell people, you know, don't touch it. And maybe we get a box so they could stand on it if they're, uh, four foot two or whatever it is. But I think having more microphones, Katie, would actually make it easier for people to spread around if we have more microphones.
I do, except for the fact that if people are spread out sitting around the auditorium, wherever you put them, people will gather in a way that you start to run out of space. That's what I'm just thinking of, but I, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, I do think you're on to something, Katie, though. You don't. When people walk up to the mic, they are kind of standing over people who are around us. So you establish some neutral zone around the microphones, you know?
Yeah, space.
Mrs. Luck.
Oh, I was thinking about the seating issue even. Is someone going to show people to their seats? Because you're going to want six feet apart, people to be six feet apart unless they're with, like, their family member. And so that means your front and back and on the side. So how do you regulate that? Does someone show everyone to their seats?
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, again, that's a good question. I, I had this exact discussion with the town manager and they, one of the real things they came up with is, well, maybe even people who, who are quarantined in the same house together to alleviate that problem, don't sit together. Now, I don't think that's a great solution to that, but it is a solution. That means everybody is six feet apart, no matter who it is. So that way you, that way you can pre-designate seats that are people are going to be in.
Yeah, you could mark the seats somehow so that you can only sit in seats with the white hood, whatever.
Yep.
Well, yeah, you can, I think if you do designate the rows, you know, say skip every two rows or every one row, just don't have anyone sit in that row. And tell everyone to keep three seats distance away from somebody who's not in your family because each seat's about two feet.
Yep.
But how do you get in and out of the row if somebody, people are without, be?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's, again, there's the, the, always that.
Again, the rule is wear a mask or social distance.
Yeah, right.
One or the other.
Ms. Adams.
Oh, sorry, I just put the hand back because I didn't know where it had gone. That's what I was going to say is, um, what Sleckman McQuade just said, if everybody's in a mask and six feet, it's supposed to be one or the other. And, um, i- i- even if we, um, overthink the way it is, if, if people show up and they're not concerned with following, um, I almost feel like there could be a part of the auditorium where you can create a very comfortable environment for people who are nervous and then a part where if five people show up together and they want to sit together, that we don't overthink it. Because if everybody has a mask on, technically they can cluster. Um, even if they don't, I think, I think if we overthink it, I think the most important thing is to set up spaces where people who are nervous can and will feel safe. And then there'll, I believe, be a large amount of people that don't feel nervous, but they can have their space too.
One of the things that I think we need to consider is also, we have other town meetings in, when there's overflow in other towns, they have the ability to go in a separate room. And we should probably think about the IT technology required to put people, let's say the gymnasium where we have a monitor, so a large screen monitor, maybe several of the school monitors that get moved in there so that people, we can put folding chairs and we can space people as far apart as we want with separate microphones so that they can participate in another room. And certainly, I believe, and one of the things in, in this recommendation sheet from the Berkshire County Boards of Health was that if people do not want to wear a mask, they should be in a room of their own. That means everybody who doesn't want to wear a mask should be in a room where all people don't want to wear a mask. Because I don't think, I think it jeopardizes everybody who wants to and is willing to wear one to be in a room where people don't. So I don't think we exclude them. I just, we put them in a room where it's a remote room. Those are the two things, uh. You two should keep your hands up. Okay, Ms. Adams.
Um, I just want to be cautious with the excluding people who aren't wearing masks because there's reasons that people may not be wearing one. They may have a respiratory condition or, or, you know, some type of asthma where.
I want, I want to be clear, I'm not excluding anybody. I'm just saying that people aren't wearing masks.
I should say the word segregate. I don't think we should pick the groups to segregate. I think the auditorium's big enough that as long as we create a place where distancing and, you know, I, I just think everybody should be allowed in. And then we just set it up so that everybody has a place.
Yeah, but there are people, and it's been shown already in public, who are not wearing masks just because they don't want to. And then they're using the loophole that nobody can ask them why they don't want to. And so therefore, I think it's easier to just say, anybody who's not wearing a mask, we're not going to ask you why. I don't care why. But people who are not wearing masks are here. I don't see that that's exclude, you know, it's not excluding anybody. They're participating, just not participating in the same room. That's all.
And I think as long as you make that known, as Mr. Griffey said ahead of time, so it's clear what conditions are. I had another question. Usually when we vote, it's voice votes and people shout as loud as they can, spewing whatever into the air. I think we should have all the votes by raising hands so that we don't have any of that. I know that takes longer, there's less fiddle involved.
Um, I understand that point. I, I don't know. I mean, I asked the town manager, I know other towns have done it. We should look into the expense of using electronic voting specific to these places where, because that excludes the whole problem of both counting, shouting, and also people not voting because they feel like other people are going to see them vote a certain way. So it keeps, uh, the privacy of voting. But that's obviously not going to happen for this town meeting. So, uh, your point is well taken. I think shouting from different rooms obviously isn't going to do it. But of course, counting everybody from rooms is probably not going to be easy either, but we only have 25 articles, I think, so.
I, I don't think you need to count everyone just because it's a hand vote.
Fair enough.
Clearly, if, you know, I can look at them and say, you know, that's a majority, that, that's not going to be difficult. It's only when somebody stands and challenges it that we'll have to get the hand vote. So I think Kipfoss's point is, is excellent because you're right, sometimes they need to shout me out and scream at the top of their lungs. And we don't need that. So a, all votes being taken by hand count, show of hands, um, you know, would make good sense.
Yep.
By the way, I, I don't know where the hand button is, so I don't know how I'm supposed to raise my hand, so.
Uh, let's see, where is it? Can somebody, I'm, I'm the host, so I don't have that. Can somebody?
Go to the participant list. Yeah, hit, it's at the bottom. You can raise and lower your hand button if you're on a laptop. It's different if you're like on your phone.
Okay.
Enough of participants.
Well, I've got the participant one. I see that my name is there. Oh, raise hand. Yeah, okay, cool. Thanks, Katie.
Raise it just so I can see.
Righty, let me raise my hand.
Look at that, all right.
And then I lower my hand. Oh.
I'll lower, no, you don't have to lower it. I'll lower it for you.
You'll, you'll tell me. All right.
Um, sure, I raised my hand, um, with the, the mask topic. I just want to be cautious that people who may show up not wearing one, it, it's, we, we can't create judgment that they're careless or bad. They may have their own reasoning. Um, I personally feel like some of these mandates, people used to always say they were unfunded mandates by the state. Well, these are unstudied mandates. And somebody like myself who's overly analytical, I've been wondering about the oxygenation of people's cardiac tissue. I was in a greenhouse wearing one, buying flowers, and I started to feel like I wasn't breathing correctly. And I was taking, you know, quicker respirations. And so eight hours of wearing a mask while theoretically might be protecting you from some people may firmly believe that it is not in their best interest for their health to wear one. And so this is a very complicated situation because it's an unstudied mandate. And I think we got to be careful that if people have beliefs, it's not necessarily carelessness or that they're being bad. It's that they just view it differently and we need to appreciate that. There is a clause in there that people are allowed to participate if they have a reason they can't wear one. And it could be something to do with a respiratory condition where wearing the mask is difficult for them. And why do you favor one group versus another? It's, to me, very complicated to set up rules that I, I just don't want to stereotype non-mask wearers or any other group of people. So I just want to.
I often know stereotype, by the way. Just going on the fact that if you're wearing one or not, it's a factual question. And then those people would be grouped and they would still be participating. Mr. Gureffy.
Sure. So a- again, one of the things that's going to be important if you're going to hold the town meeting and get a reasonable, uh, you know, participation at the meeting, is that people feel comfortable coming to the meeting. So it, it's been my experience, and again, this is just out and about delivering mask information and education to stores that most people are wearing masks. And there are those people who, if you're not wearing masks, and i- if you're going to a place and everyone on, you're really in the minority. So to make the balance of the people feel comfortable and to kind of, the town has taken the steps to be responsible about bringing people together. I think the messaging ahead of time to people saying, hey, look at, everyone needs to feel comfortable at this meeting. So we're going to have, if, if you decide to, and again, I'm not sure, I don't know what the space looks like that you're meeting in. But if you had a space saying, we're going to have a space for those people who aren't wearing masks, just because there are other people at the meeting who may have health situations that are really concerned about being at that meeting, can feel more comfortable actually attending it. So again, I don't think you do it so much to segregate somebody as you try to make everybody feel comfortable at the meeting that their health is being protected.
Thank you. Mr. McQuade.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. And I think that at very minimum, we need to make a section of the auditorium more safe for the people who are concerned, because there are definitely people who are strict followers of all the rules and want everyone else to be strict followers of all the rules. And less than we want is to be in the middle of meeting, people pointing out other people who aren't being as strict or trying to enforce it all. So I think if we, you know, the front of the auditorium, just designate that as strict rule followers, people who are going to feel more comfortable with the spacing, with the mask. Tell them they can sit up front. Anyone else who wants to get hot and heavy with the rules has to sit out back or something like that. But I feel like to walk through the door, to check in, to interact with the, the people logging you in and to be in that tight space, everyone should have to wear a mask to go through that 50 feet of the building while they're mixing all together. I think that's, it's not that much to ask them to walk through the door wearing a mask. But once you get in there, if you tell them, you can go here, do your thing, do here, go here, do your thing. I think that's how you accommodate the most people, but most importantly, make the people who don't feel safe, feel safe.
Right, but you're still, you're still probably going to get people who won't do that. May not be a large amount, but there's going to be at least a few people who won't do it.
They should at least have, be able to give that courtesy.
Well, believe, but what should be, I, I would love the world that, that, that showed. I agree with you, but it's not going to happen that way. Mrs. Luck.
I agree with, uh, Damon and Mr. Gureffy. I think that there should be a separate check-in for people who aren't willing to wear a mask through the check-in. And I think, you know, wearing a mask through the check-in is really not onerous. If you can't do that, then there should be a, a separate check-in where someone has got a face mask or, or a shield or something checking them in so that that person is protected. And that when you look at the auditorium, maybe one third of the, you know, the place, usually we have people who aren't town residents sit over to the side, have one side and people choose not to wear masks. As Mr. Griffey said, there are lots of people who are not going to be comfortable with people who aren't wearing masks. So for the comfort of most of the participants, people who aren't wearing masks should sit in a separate section, as you suggested.
Ms. Adams.
Um, I think a good point just came to mind in terms of not being able to completely regulate how people show up in terms of, of creating a protected check-in area. So if somebody feels endangered who is working check-in, just like they've done with the cashiers and, and things like that at stores, why don't we just see to it that everybody conducting check-in is in what they feel like is a safe environment behind the plexiglass or whatnot? I think if we set up a place where people feel safe checking people in, then if people show up without masks, then they're in an environment that they feel comfortable regardless. Or something like that.
Okay.
So a safe check-in area.
Out of town manager, who, uh, you know, I should point out that, uh, we invited the town clerk and we sent an email to the clown clerk's office to be participatory in this discussion we're having, and we got no response from that email. And of course, the town clerk's department is the town meeting and the subsequent election the next week are under the purview of the town clerk. So I'm a little disconcerted that we didn't even get a response to this invitation to discuss this. But who will be putting together the plan for this, Madam Town Manager? Is, is that under the purview of the town clerk? Oh, I have to unmute you.
I think it would be, um, all the parties involved tonight as well as in conjunction with the town clerk because, uh, obviously, town clerks, uh, election workers, uh, will be um, checking people in. So we're going to need input from her and I can reach out, um, to get what measures they would feel comfortable with as well.
Okay. Because I think the sooner we put a plan together, I think that the whole idea that Mr. Gureffy is talking about, uh, about first of all, messaging, 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 it's not only what you do, it's how you present what you're doing, but also ample time for people to see it and review it and make comments, the better it is for everybody. So, you know, we, we can't linger too long in putting out a plan, even a preliminary plan that people can discuss.
I do, I would like if, um, Attorney Acosta could contribute as far as the legality of any of these questions to make sure we're, um, being cognizant of everyone's rights.
So through you, Mr. Chairman?
Please, Mr. Acosta.
So I've, I've not heard anything that concerns me. Obviously, I, I would have spoken up, um, if anybody had said anything that I think runs afoul of constitutional or other protection in the, um, the proposal or the recommended guidance from Berkshire County. You saw, uh, Mark Terry's comments on that. You saw my few comments on that as well. Uh, I was glad that, um, the, the couple of things that caught my attention, uh, at least one of them had also caught Mark's attention separately and unbeknownst to me. So, uh, I think everything that's been said by members of the board tonight, uh, has been, uh, appropriately, uh, stated or caveated. I mean, for example, I would have real trouble, uh, segregating those with and without face masks if you couldn't provide equal treatment to each group, um, even in separate locations. But I think that if you can provide for the same treatment, uh, certainly the same access, um, such that there would be, uh, no discriminatory, uh, effect of your decision to place those with face masks in the auditorium and those without face masks, let's say in the gymnasium. Um, again, so long as the, the accommodations are the same, there is the ability to vote in both locations, there is the ability to, uh, hear the discussion, participate in the discussion in both locations. There is the ability to hear the discussion, participate in the discussion in both locations, and I don't see it being problematic. I think that no matter, no matter, no matter how you slice it, there are real challenges in the age of COVID-19. And I can't promise you, nor can anybody else, they'd be lying to you if they said they can promise you that there won't be a challenge to any decision that you make in the interest of public health or safety. But it's all about balancing, you know, getting business done with these important public health and safety considerations and doing so in a manner that is not discriminatory, doing so in a manner that's consistent with the governor's orders and the special legislation that we've received. And, you know, we're all sort of making it up as we go, using all of that information as as guidelines for how we proceed.
Before I go to you, Mr. Murphy, I see your hand is up. I'm gonna ask Mr. Acosta something. Of the towns that you represent, other towns, or even through your professional affiliations with other town councils, have there been anybody, any towns that have had since this all started? Is anybody else planning or had a town meeting since?
So our firm represents 22 towns as general counsel, and none of our towns have yet conducted a town meeting. We have a few, a select few, that have early June town meetings. There has been some talk of continuing those or rescheduling those early June town meetings to later in the month or beyond. I would say the lion's share of our rescheduled town meetings are now occurring between mid-June and the end of the month. I have two communities, one that has already committed to continuing their town meeting in the month of July, though they've not chosen a date yet. A second that is having those discussions presently, but again, they've not chosen a date yet. To do that, they would obviously need to adopt the 1/12 budget, at least for the month of July. But we do have, you know, the other, the other 20 communities we represent currently have dates on the books for sometime in mid to late June. Obviously, the potential exists that they would further extend those. They just haven't, they haven't made that decision yet. We just got the guidance yesterday from the governor on the on the phased reopening. So I think there will be a lot of discussions happening this week about whether to proceed with those dates or to postpone them.
Thank you. Mr. Town Moderator.
You don't mute them.
Hold on, you gotta, you muted yourself there. Okay.
Okay.
There you go.
I've come to realize that this is not the best room for me to have these meetings. I've done this for work a number of times, of course, it's daylight. And now I realized as the night began, that it was fading down. So I was trying to talk to my wife and get her to figure out what I could do. I'll do it in a different room next time. Firstly, I'd like to say that I would greatly prefer to have all of the participants in one room, segregated in some way where they can all feel comfortable. You know, for me to conduct a meeting where some people are in another room and trying to get my attention or trying to line up, or I've got to count them in different rooms would be a lot more difficult. And I don't think we're gonna have an overwhelming number of people that we can't somehow space out. I just, sometimes we're lucky to have 75 people when we start our meeting or 85 people. And so we'll hopefully have a quorum, but I think that we'll probably be able to somehow segregate the area. And maybe the school can help us space that out. I know that's what we're doing at our church. We have people in every other row, and we have them six feet apart from each other in every other row. But we are allowing people that are family members to sit together. But if you're not a family member or not living in the same household, they have to be six feet apart. I would like to encourage some kind of a system where people could come in early and check in early and then go get a coffee if they want to, if coffee shops are open. And maybe they can get their 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 voting card and keep it in their pocket and then come back so that we don't have to have everybody trying to line up at 8:50 for a nine o'clock meeting. That way, they can space themselves out a little bit. And I do think, I think Mr. McQuade talked about maybe having a separate entrance for people that, for whatever reason, are not gonna be wearing a mask. And maybe they can check in through a different door with somebody that it feels comfortable checking them in. I think that might might be helpful. But I I don't see any reason we can't conduct the meeting fairly somewhat normally. I'll certainly wear a mask. I'm not concerned about that. I'll have to figure out what mask is gonna allow me to project my voice the best without spitting on you.
Mr. Griffey.
So again, I'm not as familiar with the space that you meet in and the walkways up to it and parking and all that. So I don't know if it would be helpful for the board to have a small group of us go, the chiefs, the moderator, town clerk, go, those people who actually know how your town meeting runs, and try to map it out and sketch it out and provide you with a draft that you can then apply some of, you know, apply the public health measures to, and then kind of tweak it so that you can put it out to the public.
I think that's a great idea. If you can, if you can work with the town manager in scheduling that, that would be great.
Okay.
Ms. Adams.
I'm sure it would be weather permitting, but if it's a nice day, I can almost see check-in outside and naturally, naturally create an easier. You know, people wouldn't cluster like they would once they're inside. People could spread out and wait. Like, I don't know if anybody's gone to Conrad, but people just disperse and kind of spread out and wait. And so if it's good weather, we can have an indoor plan because we'd obviously need one. But we could also have an outdoor plan where we could put check-ins and things outside, and it would just give people the ability to come check in and and spread out very naturally.
Mrs. Luck.
Um, I realizing this is in three and a half weeks that we're talking about holding the town meeting. Do we have enough masks to be able to pass out masks to people who don't have them but want them? Do we have plenty of hand sanitizer and other things, cleaning things so that we won't be running out of things we need that day because it's three weeks away?
Town manager.
Yeah. We recently got a large shipment of disposable masks that we can have available. And I think we would have sufficient wipes as well and hand sanitizer for town meeting.
And how would bathroom cleaning happen? I would assume it would have to be cleaned, the bathrooms would have to be cleaned, I don't know, every half hour or so during the day? And I think there's a lot of rules around businesses reopening about bathroom cleanliness. How are we gonna handle that?
Good question.
Wash your hands and you're done.
To talk to the school custodial staff and the school department. Well, I think, I think most of us have talked about the same general set of principles that we're looking at. I mean, they're not different. You know, we've been living with, what, seven weeks or eight weeks under this? I think people know by now what's kind of expected in the public eye. And when you go outside of your home. So you know, I think we're starting with at least a heads up, this is not gonna come as a big surprise, shouldn't come as a big surprise to anyone. If we put the messaging right, as Mr. Griffey said, and put the plan out there early enough, we'll get enough feedback to have everybody prepared for that day. Mr. Moderator.
Traditionally, we've had coffee and donuts for sale prior to the meeting. The women's club had been providing that, and I had met with the school committee, and they had approved at that time that they were gonna have their cafeteria workers as a part of a little fundraising that they do, provide for a paper lunch. I have not, since I didn't know what you were deciding, I haven't reached back to the superintendent of schools about, I'm assuming they don't have a cafeteria worker to put together lunches. So, but they had approved that people could have lunch during the course of the meeting. So I don't know if you want to address that. I mean, it adds another layer of, I gotta take my mask down to sip on my coffee, eat my donut, chomp on my chips. So we could go back to just no food other than water at the meetings. Your thoughts, anyone?
I think water, we could probably accommodate, but I think food may be tougher. A drink, I think you can, I think it's probably unrealistic to expect people to sit in the seat for X amount of hours without being able to take a drink of water. But I think they could probably preclude having a cookie or something. Hold on. So we have, we have a bunch of people. So Katie, do you want to speak to this point?
Yes, a couple of points. To this point specifically, you just said nobody would need a cookie. But we have to be very careful. We're generalizing. I worked with a man who couldn't make it an hour without having a granola bar because he was a severe diabetic. We cannot take coronavirus and put those fears and needs ahead of other people's things, and we also shouldn't draw attention to them because of privacy. And so there's sometimes people who need to keep little snack packs and take on a little bit of food in order to keep their blood sugar. So I think we should set up general rules, keep and make people feel safe, but don't hyperanalyze the fact that everybody has different needs. And and just let, let, let some things be.
Mr. McQuade.
Yeah, I, again, it's, it's not just gonna be people who refuse to wear a mask. I mean, there's gonna be people who need a break from wearing a mask. I know it's gonna drive me nuts wearing one for that long. So if you need, that's where if you did front and back of the auditorium, someone needs to get up from the front, sit in the back, have their snack, just take a break from wearing the mask. I think you can partition it that way. Keep them all in the same room. But I mean, people are gonna need a break from that.
Well, by the way, I should, I should also offer that the idea of snacks and food in the auditorium is really a school rule as well. So it's a, it's a rule against the room. I'm not trying to discriminate against everybody. In fact, they had a real, it was a real discussion after the last town meeting, special town meeting, that, you know, they didn't like the fact that people were, that this event was, you know, was excluded from that rule because it caused a lot of problems with people making a mess and everything. So again, it's as far as people's health concerns, sure, nobody's gonna, there's not gonna be people walking up and down the aisles as the snack police if you have something. But there's a difference between that and what the moderator said about offering donuts and cookies in the auditorium, you know, in the lobby of the auditorium either. So. Mrs. Luck.
I'd like to hear from, if Mr. Griffey has an opinion on this, because I read in the Berkshire County Boards of Health Association documents that they advised against food. You know, I don't.
You have a viewpoint on that?
So providing food might be problematic because it adds that layering of people queuing in line and and then, you know, changing, if you're doing it as a fundraiser, exchange of money and such. But, you know, to Solomon Adams' point, you know, having people who need to have food during a meeting, you know, whether they wanted to bring granola bars or some kind of, something that gets them through that part of a meeting. Maybe that's a conversation with the school committee to say, hey, look at, just for people's health, we want to make sure that somebody can have a snack during the meeting if they need to.
Ms. Adams.
Um, okay, and a couple of other things. One, in regards to town meeting, updating the electronic signs that say all school properties are closed. We definitely want to go on an advertisement change so that people are aware that in this case, you know, we're reopening that site. And also, on a side note, it doesn't need to say schools are closed anymore because, I know. I know. And somebody asked a question, you know, in terms of people that are are more nervous or more vulnerable. I know we check in in a voter registration way, and this may be a question for the Board of Health in terms of somebody felt like, is there a way that contact tracing is set up? So, you know, information broke that something contagious had happened. Is that all still being managed or is that not possible? That was just a question from a citizen.
Anybody want to?
So the contact tracing, I mean, right now, if we get somebody who tests positive and we get a report, our nurses will be in touch with that person, will reach out and get the contacts of that person so that we can follow up on them. I'm not sure if we're looking for, like, people to sign into the meeting. I assume you'll have, just based on, and again, I don't know how your license goes, but people sign in the voter roll. You'll have a list there if you thought that that was something that you might need to do. Again, I think part of that messaging, a really important part of that messaging is to make sure people don't come to the meeting if they're sick. They really need to. If we haven't learned anything yet from this is that stay home if you're sick. It is, it doesn't mean if you're sick, put a mask on and stay six feet away from people. It means stay home.
Mr. Town Moderator, do you want to say something?
Well, I, I didn't want, I couldn't find my, I raised my hand button fast enough. And then Katie, Katie thought we were done with the conversation about food, which I think we probably are. I just think that, I just wanted you to know that, you know, the school committee, the school department had said, no food, period, end. And that was kind of their policy, water only. And then I went to the committee and asked them if they could make special arrangements for us. And they made the concession that food would be allowed if they could sort of control what the food was. That was kind of the way that it went down, that, you know, they would, you know, make sure that it wasn't peanut butter and jelly that was gonna make so much of a mess, et cetera, and so on. So that was kind of the way that whole thing went down. So I think maybe, you know, I'll go back to the school committee and let them know, you know, obviously, that we're having a town meeting and that they aren't gonna have cafeteria people to make a lunch. And I can see what they want to do about that type of thing, but probably just let it go for this year might be the best thing to do. And assuming we could have something a little more traditional for our town meeting. The reason I had done the idea of food and lunches, where people were bringing it anyways, and when the meeting starts at nine o'clock and it gets through at about eight o'clock, you know, it's not, it's not the unusual person, Katie, that needs nutrition. It's everybody, including the moderator.
Mrs. Luck.
I have a question about handouts. Usually, there's a big table with all kinds of handouts. How will that be dealt with? People congregate around it, people passing out papers.
So are they required?
Maybe we can have enough people's seats and not required.
There you go.
Maybe have a packet ready and just put them on the designated seats. It might even be able to be the way to sit.
Seems like a good solution.
Sounds like a good idea, yeah. Anybody else? Okay. Well, I want to thank you all for a good discussion here about this. I think we need to come up with the first draft and get this out as quickly as we can. So, Mr. Griffey, if you want to work with the town manager and and help coordinate who you need to speak with, I'm assuming the moderator would be one. Probably maybe people from the school, maybe the chiefs, I'm not sure, but town clerk. Yep. So, you know, just, I have a list of all the topics. I'm sure the town manager has taken a list as well. So make sure those are addressed. Again, I don't think any of these were surprising topics. I just want to make sure they're all coordinated in a large effort so we can make it as seamless as possible. I'm gonna thank you all for participating in that. Anybody who doesn't have any further business, actually, there's just a manager report and minutes and action items. So anybody who wants to can can stay attending. If you want to drop off, feel free to do so. Thank you. Give me a moment. I think that's everybody. Yes. Okay, so warrants, I signed this past week four warrants. The accounts payable warrant was the amount of $2,373,539.94. The reason of that large amount was the payment of the middle school, high school of $2 million. That's why it was in that range. Accounts payable deduction warrants in the amount of $563,255.79, 75 cents. Payroll warrant in the amount of $11,810.88. And another payroll warrant in the amount of $810,220. And another payroll warrant in the amount of $810,224.45.
Oh, thanks for having those in there. That's helpful.
Yep. Well, we didn't have a chance to get them into the, usually they're on the warrant, the agenda itself. Um, but we didn't get them in beforehand. So minutes, do we have minutes? I, I don't know if there's any minutes here. We'll come back, we can put that on a later thing. I think there were some that were distributed, but I'm not going to be concerned about it. Action items.
I think she said that, she said that it would be the June 2nd meeting.
Correct.
And then it's that she sent out. I, I do have an action item.
Okay, but hold on, Mrs. Adams, you, Mrs. Adams, your hand up.
Uh, sure. Um, it's okay if Phyllis goes. I just had a couple of items, but she can go ahead.
Thanks, Katie. Uh, the weather is bringing us right into mosquito season. We all know that rimless tires are breeding grounds for mosquitoes. We are fortunate in Lunenburg have the ability to have such tires removed at no charge by the Central Mass Mosquito Control Project, which, which Lunenburg is a member of. I would like to ask the town manager to have all town facilities that house vehicles to ensure that all tires without rims are removed, or if they are of any value, you move to locations undercover. The town should be setting a good example for its residents and helping to reduce the mosquito population through this easy, painless, and cost-free option. I had the opportunity to work with this Central Mass Mosquito Control Project in removing a bunch of tires from the Robbs Hill Conservation Area. They were lovely folks and easy to work with, and they helped drag the tires up the hill. I recently had the opportunity to view a pile of probably 30 or 40 of these tires out in the open at a town facility. I'd like the town manager to advise when these are going to be removed. Thank you. If she needs information on where they are, I can let her know because I just don't want to embarrass anyone on TV.
Yes, I think providing the locations in an email would be helpful, yes. Ms. Adams?
Okay, just a couple of things for the future agenda. One, I think we attempted to accomplish it tonight, but, um, putting on the idea of, um, doing the Pledge of Allegiance, or if we have a way we can begin our meetings like that, I think we are going to talk about it as an agenda item, but it ended up on the agenda without a flag. So if we could put that on the agenda. Um, another thing, um, is on the agenda, if, if people, if, uh, the board agrees, I would like to have some sort of night or workshop or time where we talk about, um, dog license, dog kennels, pet safety, not specific to a case, but just in general. Um, you know, as, as we've worked through, um, different topics in the past, just making sure that we all understand, and I know there's some things in the warrant and everything, but I just sort of got the feeling, um, with getting different emails that an, an update on understanding, um, uh, different actions with animal control and things, um, might be something that would be helpful. Um, another agenda item, just as we're talking about town meeting preparation, talking about, um, election preparation, but more importantly, if we could brainstorm a way to advertise or encourage people to run as write-ins for vacant seats. I wouldn't want to inject in places where there, um, are candidates for positions, but something like planning board, there's three positions without anybody on the ballot. Um, sometimes they need a, a four vote, uh, for certain things to go through in town. So if we could put that on the agenda to talk about, uh, preparing for the election and how to, um, seek and, and distribute information about people who may be interested in being a write-in. I don't know how people feel about that, but I think it's important with all these vacancies. And then the last item I just wanted to ask about, um, is talking about the Walmart intersection. I've been bringing that up for about a year to look for updates. I know it's a state intersection, but I drove past an accident today. Um, at that site, I think it could be fixed with, um, one side going at a time. Um, and, um, so I just wanted to bring that up again, just to be redundant because that's my style. Thanks.
So, so, okay, so the Pledge of Allegiance one, we could definitely put on the June 2nd agenda. The item about people running would be obviously apropos before the election. So we could put that on the June 2nd elec- uh, agenda. The dog licenses and everything, I feel we should probably hold off till at least after a town meeting, if that's okay.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And that, but that fourth one, I don't know that there, I understand everybody, and especially your, um, your feeling about that intersection, and I, and I share it, but I don't know that an agenda item, it, it's not the board of selectmen that's holding this up. So I don't know that an agenda item.
Oh, not necessarily an agenda item. I just had a, like a list of bullets I wrote down and it was in my action. And me, maybe it's just during town manager report. I don't know. I just wanted to check in on it because I went by accident today. And, uh, a mom had inquired about a year ago about that intersection and, and we're lucky that it hasn't been fatal. But I just think we need to push the state to just simply change the way that intersection operates.
Understood.
Thank you.
Chief Marino? Oh, I have to unmute you. Hold on. There you go.
We've been working on that intersection issue for about a year, the town manager and I. And, uh, I believe shortly, uh, the state will be making some changes, uh, engineering changes to that intersection, which will help, um, alleviate that, uh, left turn issue.
Excellent.
I did a clap.
Took a long time, but that's the way it works, unfortunately.
Thank you, chief. Uh, any other action items? Any committee reports? Okay. All right, spotlight, big spotlight and drum roll for the town manager COVID-19 report and the town manager report.
I'll start with, um, the town manager regular report. Our, our vacancies, there's two alternate vacancies in the agricultural commission, one vacancy in the Americans with Disabilities Act Commission, one vacancy in the Architectural Preservation District Commission, one vacancy in finance, one vacancy on open space committee, two vacancies on the planning board until the election, and two associate vacancies on the zoning board of appeals. Talent bank forms can be obtained from the town website and forwarded to the Board of Selectmen's office.
If I can, if I can interject here, so the planning board positions, two of them are not really even up for election this year. Were those two that have vacancies because they came late? We couldn't even put them on the election. It says election in May, which I'm assuming you mean May 2021. Or June? June or next May?
June.
Okay, okay. And, yeah, okay.
The warrant we signed had three on it. The one that was Elaine had laid out, it said planning board, and then it showed three vacancies for the, um, election, the thing we signed. That's just where I got it from.
Yeah, I assume that one of those is, is currently has a seat, a seat. So there's three positions up for election, and one of them is probably has a, somebody in it right now.
Right, but they're still not on the ballot.
Right, no, no, I, I understand your point. I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just not, the, the positions that the town manager just read, not all of them are elected, and I don't even think she included the elected. Usually these are appointed positions here.
Right.
So.
Next item, uh, CARES Act funding. As I reported last week, the town has begun to receive some relief funds from the CARES Act Relief Fund. We received $7,035 from the Department of Health and Human Services Emergency Relief Fund, and the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education informed the superintendent that we would receive $198,000 specifically for the schools. I participated in a call on May 14th, set up jointly by the Massachusetts Municipal Association and the Division of Local Services and the Executive Office for Administration and Finance, providing guidance to cities and towns on what we can anticipate for CARES Act relief funding, what is eligible at this point, and when we will be able to submit for reimbursement for COVID-19 related expenses. The state also provided the total that each town is eligible to receive. And Lunenburg's total eligible amount for fiscal 20 and 21 is $1,027,771. At this point, loss revenues are not eligible costs, but Congress is currently discussing changing the restrictions on the use of these funds to include loss revenues. I had a meeting yesterday with the finance director and the police and fire, public safety coordinators to discuss spending against the $7,000 CARES Act money we have already received, FEMA eligible costs, and CARES Act eligible costs. It was confirmed late today by the Secretary of the Executive Office of Administration and Finance, after they conferred with the federal government that the CARES Act funds can be used as the 25% match to the FEMA funds, which only reimburses 75% of eligible costs. The police and fire, public safety coordinators are tracking FEMA eligible costs, and the finance director is tracking all other eligible costs that will be posted to the emergency expenditure account. The first round of submitting for CARES Act funding for fiscal 20, both already spent monies and anticipated expenses for the remainder of fiscal 20 is June 5th. If we do not submit all eligible FY20 costs by June 5th, there will be another opportunity to submit, but the goal will be to submit all anticipated expenses so we can wipe out any deficit, um, from these emergency expenditures going into fiscal 21. Seventeen and 23 West Street property, we received three bids in response to the request for proposals for the West Street property with a high bid of $35,000. The high bidder met the conditions of the request for proposals. I'm looking for agreement from the board on moving forward with the award of the bid to the highest bidder.
Is that, I, I'm assuming that's going to be a future agenda item?
I can, yes, we can put it on the June 2nd meeting?
Yes, please, yes. Make sure that, uh, make sure there's map, like maps of where they are, just so we can, uh, remind ourselves where these two properties are.
Any questions about that in anticipation of that agenda topic?
Not for me. That's good news.
Memorial Day ceremony and gold lights at the gazebo. The chairman of the board previously announced that there will be a virtual Memorial Day video that will be aired on Monday, May 25th at 10:00 AM on channels eight and nine, and will be aired again throughout next week. Also, the veterans agent asked if we could participate in a state effort to light town buildings, memorials, or flags in gold over Memorial Day in honor of the Gold Star families of the Commonwealth. Gold Star families are spouses, children, parents, siblings, or others whose loved one died in service to our nation. Dave McDonald has graciously taken this on, and the town gazebo will be lit from Friday evening until Tuesday morning in gold. And Chairman Alonso already spoke, um, in regards to the farmer's market. And so this, um, this topic was on that. There's a map of the location, which we'll also, um, per suggestion, put on the town website. So it's clear, and people have a lot of notice of what's expected when they participate in the, uh, attend the farmer's market. Town council has office hours on May 20th, 12 to 4 PM. The school committee is meeting Wednesday, May 20th, and I will be attending their executive session portion of the meeting. And the municipal vulnerability preparedness workshop is this Thursday from 8:30 AM to 12:30 PM.
That's a remote meeting, right?
Correct.
Any questions about town manager report? Okay.
Okay, go into, uh, updates regarding COVID-19. And I highlighted this, uh, week's report, you noticed, uh, so it's.
Thank you.
The Board of Health issued their weekly update dated May 15th and has been put on the COVID-19 information page. And as of May 18th, there are 54 confirmed positive cases in Lunenburg, 22 of which have recovered and one death. The reopening task force, they will be, we will be meeting tomorrow, May 20th, to discuss yesterday's guidance issued by the Baker-Pleito administration and the creation of our control plan to comply with these requirements. The facilities director and the town manager's executive assistant have been working on getting our stock of masks, gloves, cleaning supplies, sanitizer, and wipes to a level suitable for employees to start returning to the workplace, and will continue to monitor our supplies to sufficient levels. Our control plan will include ensuring we can maintain social distancing, adhere to proper hygiene protocols, employee certification measures that they are in good health and, health in the workplace, return to work protocols, and ensure proper cleaning and disinfecting of workspaces, and provide training and posters for employees and eventually visitors to town facilities. Our reopening will be a slow phase approach that will be determined by having the necessary protocols, supplies, and protections in place to do so safely. More me, and the release comprehensive plan from the Baker-Pleito administration is included in this report under the updates from the state and federal government. And scrolling down for the board, um, update on cases as of May 18th in the state of Massachusetts. There are 87,052 COVID-19 cases, 5,862 deaths, and 460,826 patients have been tested to date. Yesterday, the governor released the, uh, plan for reopening Massachusetts and the reopening advisory boards report, which details a four-phase strategy to responsibly reopen businesses and activities while continuing to fight COVID-19. The administration also released a new safer-at-home advisory, which instructs residents to stay at home unless engaging with newly opened activities as a way to continue limiting the spread of COVID-19. Starting today, based on current public health data and trends, Massachusetts will begin phase one. And that actually started yesterday, the 18th. On a cautious reopening in workplaces that are permitted to open as required to follow new safety protocols and guidance. And, um, goes on from there, the safer-at-home advisory. Uh, the Department of Public Health updated the stay-at-home advisory, replacing it with a new safer-at-home advisory, and instructs everyone to stay at home unless they're headed to a newly opened facility or activity in those the age of 65 or with underlying health conditions to stay at home. And the gatherings of, uh, more than 10 people is to remain in place. And the, the website is very comprehensive. Um, look at that. It's www.mass.gov backslash reopening. And it goes into a lot of detail with specific industries as well, um, for those people in certain businesses that would like that information.
Can I ask a question? Didn't that say advisory? Does it say when the end of that is?
No, that's, um, let me see.
No, I think like the safe-at-home one, it's, it's open-ended until they reevaluate conditions.
Right.
So what will happen to town meeting if this restriction on gathering of more than 10 people remains is in effect for more than, for four weeks?
Town meetings are exempt. Town meetings are exempt from this advisory and the prohibition of gatherings of over 10 people.
Jeez, I haven't seen that in writing. Where can I find that?
I'll ask Attorney Costa, where is? Can that guidance be found?
Uh, through you, Karen.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. So, um, so yes, in the original order that the governor issued, which was then extended twice, uh, where the, the components of that order were, was, were both, uh, the closing of, of non-essential businesses as well as the prohibition of gatherings of 10 or more people. In the section that addressed the gatherings, it provided for certain exceptions to that, uh, prohibition. And one of the exceptions was for, uh, municipal legislative bodies. In other words, town meetings. So it was in the original order that issued that was then extended twice and has now been further extended by virtue of the reopening plan. So I've also reviewed a lot of documentation over the past 24 hours on the reopening plan. I've also reviewed a lot of documentation over the past twenty-four hours on the reopening plan. I've not seen explicit reference made in any of that guidance document to town meetings. Um, I presume that that's simply because, going back to the original issued, town meetings were, were exempt.
Yeah, I guess that makes sense.
Yes.
It's odd, though. No, no more than ten people unless you're gonna have a hundred people.
There's spores and all sorts of things that just don't meet that, you know?
Is that the end of the?
Yes.
Over nineteen, okay.
Thank you.
All right, our next, we do not have a meeting next week, next Tuesday. So our next week is, our next meeting is June second? And then we'll have a, a meeting on June ninth. So we have two meetings between now and the, and the, um, scheduled date for town meeting to discuss, uh, discuss things. And some of them are on the agenda that, uh, were brought up earlier in this meeting. Any public comment from the public? Katie, do you have something before public comment, or you have something?
I did. I was just gonna ask the question of who is, who is the primary person who's compiling the plan for town meeting and will present it in such a way we can discuss it on the next meeting's agenda. So if the two weeks go by, and so we should have some type of, like, plan we can read through and sort of brainstorm on whether or not it sounds like it's meeting everything. Who's like the main point person for that?
I'll be that, uh, the point.
I will say, I will say that officially by, by their role should be the town clerk. However, I am very glad that the town manager stepped forward and do that, so we will be sure to have a plan.
Yeah, something that's concrete that we can read at the next meeting, have it on the agenda, and then look for the, um, you know, hypothetical ways that we could improve it, or, or, you know, sort of analyze it, and hopefully read it ahead of time, because it's gonna, this time will go by very quickly.
Yeah, I, I would like to see it. I would like to see it, um, a couple of days before that, because we're gonna need to review it, and then town meetings just two weeks after that.
And we're assuming low attendance.
Get around, getting it.
Yeah, it's town meeting, so of course we're assuming low attendance.
Yes, but these are new times. I mean, people may be like, holy smokes, there's something to do. It could be our biggest turnout ever. And so we could really, like.
I hope. I would, I would, I would, I would be surprised. It is possible, but I would be surprised. Uh, now, town manager, if we can have something to review, you know, as a, as a rough draft, sometime like at least, you know, by the Thursday before our next meeting or Friday at the latest, so we have the chance to review it, and make sure that this item of current business number two is, uh, remains on there, so we can have a review of the preliminary plan, please.
Will do. Now, do we need to discuss anything about elections, or is how those are gonna be run?
Uh, again, that's really under the purview of the town clerk. So I would, I would start asking the town clerk what her plan is for the election.
Will the town manager do that?
Uh, again, I remind people that the town clerk is an elected position, so the town manager has no authority over the town clerk. However, even if she, even if she put together a plan, the town clerk is in, under no obligation to read it and follow it, or do anything about it.
No, I'm just saying, will the town man be able to give us a report on what the town elections will look like? Or will the town clerk, will we ask the town clerk to come and give a presentation on it? It's not an ordinary town election. It's different.
I, I understand that, it, but people still have their, their elected responsibilities. And so we can, I mean, I would say that it's on us that we should email the town clerk as fellow elected officials and say, the board would like to know, we don't need the town manager to act on our behalf to ask the town clerk, what is the plan for the election?
Let's do that.
We have, we all have her, we all have her email address, and I would recommend that we all send an email to her, asking her what is her plan for the election.
All right, will do.
Ms. Adams?
Yeah, I just wanted to say in regards to the election, I think it's just clear that, yes, the town clerk has an ordinary responsibility over ordinary elections, but if there's masks and all these other things, clearly the collaboration between her and, um, the town clerk and the town manager needs to happen, because the town clerk will need resources from the town to operate it. So there does have to be something, not just emails or random questions, but a true collaboration between town resources and the town clerk's needs. So with the limited time, I think there should be, you know, some sort of meeting established, um, and not an expectation that this lies in the town clerk's court, because anything that's outside of the ordinary really lies in the towns.
The town clerk is part of the reopening task force, and we have a meeting tomorrow, so hopefully she'll be able to attend.
So, public comment from the public, uh, Chief Marino. Whoa, hold on, got to unmute you. There you go.
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, uh. Let me just talk about the town meeting issue for just one second. Uh, I'm sure that the town manager is gonna call upon myself, the fire chief, uh, Jim Giriffey from the Board of Health, and so forth, uh, to meet at the school and come up with some kind of plan. I would caution you, having been involved in many situations, such as what we're gonna uh, embark upon, that these are gonna be fluid situations. We won't know, and we won't be able to predict what's gonna happen. So we'll come up with some kind of a plan, and that plan will most likely include a lot of help from all of the department heads, uh, and in terms of police, uh, fire, medical people that'll be on, uh, that'll be available on the day of the town meeting, in that we'll come up with contingency plans, uh, i.e. if it's raining or so forth. And I would suggest that when we produce this plan and present it to you by next week, hopefully, uh, that you take all of that into consideration, that we don't know what's gonna happen, but we're gonna have, uh, the key is to have enough help on hand, enough supplies on hand, that we can handle uh, any amount of people or any other situation that might arise. And I don't, I would also caution everybody not to dwell on the exception to the rule. My experience so far is that the general public, uh, most of them, uh, have no problem wearing masks uh, with cooperating with, uh, the rules set aside by the, uh, Board of Health and so forth. So I just wanna make everybody relax. Uh, we're gonna take care of this, and probably this week, and come back to you with some kind of report. And I'd just like you to keep that in mind, um, that it's a fluid, it's gonna be a fluid situation. And if we have enough help there, we'll be able to deal with it. Um, and I hope, maybe that I relieve a little bit of anxiety. So thank you for letting me say this.
Thank you. Any other public comment from the public? I see no hands raised. Any public comment from the board? I also see no hands raised, so I would, excuse me, entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Second. Okay, uh, roll call here. Ms. Adams? Mr. McQuade?
Hi.
Mrs. Luck?
Hi, and good night.
And an eye for me. Good night, everyone. We will see you in two weeks. Uh, please watch the Memorial Day service, uh, in tribute to all those fallen heroes of the country. And, uh, please take care of yourselves and take care of each other. Good night.
Night.